So, okay, so we're going to go on the fly here. We're going to, we're going to see what we can do to get some of this done. Looks like we have one, two, three, four, five people on Zoom. That's unfortunate. I know we had a lot more people that registered for Zoom, so duh. I don't know what we're going to do about that. And then, um, so what I wanted to do tonight was to do some introductions. I was going to go to format, what the format was going to be, which now has changed, what the current state is of the fire department, and then we're going to open it to questions and answers. The presentation will be quick, especially now since I can't project it. It'll be really quick. So I wanted to, um, okay, introduce you to the fire commissioners. For those of you who don't know who the fire commissioners are, me, Mary Chandler, I am a fire commissioner and I hold the role of treasurer there. Linda Burghill is a fire commissioner. Linda Burghill is our liaison with the auxiliary. She also brings a property management background with her, so lucky her, she's our building maintenance person. Whenever anything goes wrong with the building, we call Linda, and she's very busy. Um, Lori Dalton, oh Karen, yes. Karen Murphy is our newest member, and she is learning a lot, getting very overwhelmed. She is our liaison to the fire department, so she helps chief with everything that he needs. She's learning all of the medical products that we use and making sure we have inventories and so when we need to order supplies, she takes care of that. So she's learning a lot. Lori Dalton in the back is our secretary. She does such a good job, there's no doubt why she's the secretary and the public records custodian. Our chair, Nancy McMaul, is not able to be here tonight, so she's our chair. So there's a five-board commission that runs the, um, the fire department. Um, I was going to introduce chief, but I don't know where he is. This is not good. And we were supposed to have, we do have Brad here. Brad's a resident of the park and he's also a member of the fire department. He's a first responder. Um, and then we do have some firefighters that... I made, huh? Okay. I made the mistake of telling them they could go back and get something to eat because they were here this afternoon, and I guess I shouldn't have done that, but that's okay. They'll be here. When they get here, I'll introduce them. So the format, um, well, let's back it up a minute. I have some huge thank yous for tonight. Um, Pierre, where'd she go? Right there. Pierre, oh my God. She, I had some recent family issues that I've been trying to deal with, and I've been out of pocket now for about a week, and she stepped in. She worked on the PowerPoint presentation that you're not able to see, but it's awesome. Um, she's been helping me tonight with these technical difficulties and, oh Lord, the posters you see in the park, the sitting at the post office, signing people up, getting volunteers to work with her. Um, it's just another reminder of what a great community we live in when somebody has a family issue, the number of people that just come out of the woodwork to say, what can I do and help? It's overwhelming and I just am so thankful. Bill, where'd Bill go? Bill Cottum agreed to come here tonight on his off-hours and volunteer to help us with the technical aspects of this evening. I can't thank him enough. We have Channel 732 that's going to be broadcasting this, and that, thank you so much for the last-minute agreement to do that, um, because we knew some people were going to be looking for it on Channel 732. Oh dear, where am I? I guess that's it. Um, so, um, the, uh, let's go back here. So the format, so I was going to share a brief presentation, and I will go over that. Open it for questions and answers. What I was going to do first is some people submitted questions in advance. I will read those and give you the answers to those questions. Then what I'd like to do is, I was going to alternate back and forth between a few from the floor and a few from Zoom, but what I'm being told is it's easier to just do one or the other. So what I probably will do is open it up to Zoom first, since there's only a few people that were able to get in, and if they have any questions, we'll unmute them and they can ask their questions, and then we'll go to questions here. Um, hopefully my presentation will answer some of your questions, but it also may make you think of questions you hadn't had before that now you want to ask. If you have a question, I'd like you to please go to the podium. I don't want to pass the microphone around. That's probably not the best thing to do, so if you can go to the podium, you can take your mask off when you ask your question, but then I'd like it to go back on if you could please. So we'll do that, and you know, depending on how the evening goes, I was going to start limiting it to just one question in the beginning, so everybody has an opportunity to ask a question, and then if you want to come up with another question because nobody asked the question that you had, then you can go up and ask your question. If we find that the evening's going lengthy and you haven't asked your question, we're going to capture it on this parking lot flip chart over here, and we're going to make sure you get the answer. Okay? We're going to try to keep it informal. This is all about educating you and you asking questions and us helping you understand the challenges. Uh, let's see. I guess that's it right now for that. So what are we? I think for those of you that don't know, we are a 100% volunteer fire department right now. We run about 150 medical calls and about 30 fire calls a year. Our mission statement, well, it would have been nice to read it up there, but the mission statement is to prevent the loss of life and property by maximizing our ability to respond and to serve the changing needs of our community through continuous training and public education. Friday night is training night at the station, so if you go by the station on a Friday night, you're going to see the trucks out of the bays, you're going to see the parking lot there full of cars, and you're apt to see most anything going on. So we start the evening out at six o'clock. We put on a, a simple meal. We talk about what our goals are for the night for training, and then they get at it. It runs late because we have only that one night, because all of our firefighters work a full-time job as well as volunteer for us. So it's not uncommon for training night to go till 11 o'clock. I think it did last night, actually. Okay, for fire protection, we run about 61% of the fire calls we go on are gas leaks, electrical hazards, smoke investigations, vehicle fires, fire alarms, outside fires, and, I could find some wood, knock on wood, we don't have many structure fires. The other 39% are non-medical lift assist and service calls. And service calls run the whole gamut. Me who decided I wanted to be my own plumber and broke a water line and my house was flooding and they came, called 911 and they came to shut the water off, so it could be most anything. So why is a timely response to a fire call important? Having a fire department right here in the park and somebody who can respond when you call 911. So just for the people here and the people on Zoom, I can't really see, but how many here have smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, fire extinguishers in their home? Excellent. Excellent. Okay, that's great. So 51% of manufactured homes, mobile homes are reported to not have a fight, a smoke detector in their homes. I think we have a benefit here because we'll come check your smoke detector. With COVID, unfortunately, we're not doing that right now. We're not going into people's homes, but hopefully someday we'll get back to doing that, making sure that everybody here has a working smoke detector. Mobile homes do burn quicker than a stick-built home. They're built so that they're lighter materials for transport. Okay? There was an analysis done of mobile home fires from 2007 to 2011 by the National Fire Protection Association, that's NFPA. That is the association that governs everything we do. And it determined that in homes built after 1976, had a 57% lower rate of death due to fire. So how many people here have a home that was built before 1976? Okay, so you're in that high-risk area. Is it even for mobile homes built after 1976, there's still some unique fire concerns? So one of those major fire concerns is the proximity of our homes. Our homes are five to 10 feet away from each other. When we get a call for a structure fire, the most important thing is putting your fire out, but it's equally important that we protect the homes around you because you're only five feet apart. So controlling the spread of that fire is just as important as putting your fire out. So I'd ask the question, and I got a great show of hands for people that have smoke detectors, fire extinguishers. Do you know if your neighbor does? Because I just, you know, we just talked about the proximity. Let's hope your neighbor does, because that fire could be your worst nightmare. So I know when we have fires in the, um, the park, people can see Cedar Hammock fire trucks responding to those fires. So I want you to understand what, what role Cedar Hammock takes in fire calls in the park. Manatee County, all the fire departments in Manatee County have an inter-local agreement, and it says nobody, if they have a fire, will have to fight that fire alone if they need help. The closest available unit will always be dispatched to help them. It's a mutual aid agreement, so it means if we have a fire, Cedar Hammock, because they're the closest available unit, will be dispatched. If they're there and not putting out a fire of their own, they will come. If they're the only person here who responds to that fire, it's no longer mutual aid. They can bill us for every truck, for every person, for every hour that they were here putting that fire out. So it's important that we continue to have a presence and we continue to have people responding to those fires, so it is truly mutual aid. That's a bill that if we got it, I don't think we could survive it, the amount of money that that would cost. Okay, so that's, I mean, a little bit of snapshot on fire calls. Let's talk about medical calls. Medical calls are the majority of what we do. All right, about 80% of what we do every day is medical calls. So falls are 26 and a half percent of the calls we get. Falls can be anything. Okay? My husband was that person who fell at the post office. He has a broken arm and a broken hip. It could be something as bad as that, it could be just a bruise and you, you know, you could have fallen out of bed and we're going to put you back into bed, but falls, you just don't know. And those are 26 and a half percent of our calls. Cardiac calls are 18.7%. Unknown medical, mystery. That means that the dispatch didn't get enough information to know what category to put it in. Okay? So you don't know what you're going to be getting when you arrive on scene. You have to be ready for anything, and I know they've seen pretty much anything when those calls come in. Thanks, guys. Okay. Breathing problems, 10.6%. You're having difficulty breathing. We're going to talk about response times, how long it takes people to arrive on scene. When you're having difficulty breathing, every minute counts. Okay, so, um, performance. This slide, I really wish that I could project, because it does talk about who's arriving for those medical calls and how much, how long it's taking them to get there. I'm going to give you some numbers, but I want you to understand these are averages. So 50% of the calls are taking less time than what I'm going to share with you, and some are taking longer. So when you have a breathing difficulty call, it says that EMS is arriving on average seven minutes and 13 seconds from the time you call 911. That seems like a lifetime when you're, when you're having difficulty breathing. We, on the other hand, are arriving on scene in five minutes and 26 seconds. And that's with skeleton crew, who if they don't have to work that day and they can be here, they're able to respond to the call. Five minutes, that's two minutes less. Two minutes seems like a lifetime when you're having difficulty breathing. Um, fall, when we talked about a fall, EMS arrives on average eight minutes and 23 seconds. You're laying on the ground and you've broken god only knows what. You're waiting eight minutes for them to come. We're, we're averaging about six and a half minutes. Still a long time, but most of those calls are people, it's chief coming from his house, you know, or Elizabeth walking away from her Thanksgiving table to run to a call that comes in, which she has done. Um, you know, at this point, you know, since they're here, I would like to take a few minutes to introduce the firefighters that are here tonight. So I mentioned Elizabeth. Elizabeth is our lieutenant. That's Elizabeth. Um, Elizabeth is a firefighter to EMR, soon to be an EMT. Um, so we're very thrilled. She is a fantastic leader. They follow her direction. She does most of the training. Chief kind of dictates what training's going to look like. Elizabeth runs it. They take her lead. She's great. Sitting next to her, standing next to her is Madeline Koiner. Madeline, you are a firefighter to EMR as well, or are you in EMT now? I'm sorry? EMT, okay. Um, Madeline came to us in April of 2020. A lot of these individuals are fairly new to the department. We do have some great veterans. Next to her, we have, okay. Tiffany Bond, I was going to say, I didn't have you on my list to be here tonight, so thank you Tiffany for coming tonight. I'm thinking, wait a minute, Tiffany wasn't on my list. Tiffany, you are a firefighter to EMT, EMR? Okay. You know, I just was thinking back, Elizabeth, what do you do during the day when you're not here?
Well, I work at a...
Let's get you a microphone. Or you can, yeah, let's...
So I work at a cardiologist doctor's office. That is my full-time job when I'm not here. I also work on a marina where I go from painting to putting down docks. I work with one of our members, Mr. Marcus, and he does the same thing. But majority of my time, I'm out of doctor's office, taking care of other patients too, getting a lot of hands-on, talking with a lot of people. Uh, actually, some people from the park actually come to the doctor's office that are part of our CERT team, and they come and they talk to me, and we have a good conversation about Trailer Estates.
Yep, thank you. So Madeline, does your microphone work? I turned it on, let's see if it works. If not, okay. What do you do when you're not here at Trailer Estates?
Uh, I work at a quick lube off of 70, so I change oil, do other things on a car, and I also work at Parish Fire Department, do that on my free time too.
Okay. This is, this is the life of a volunteer fire department. This is what they do to pay the bills, and then when they have, when they're not doing that, they're not with their families, they're here. Tiffany?
I work full-time as a phlebotomist at Sarasota Memorial Hospital, so about five days a week there, free time here.
And, uh, yeah. Richard?
My name is Richard McGinley. I drive a bus for SCAT, Sarasota County.
What's your, what's your qualifications, Richard? Because I didn't introduce you.
I'm a firefighter to EMR.
I'm Captain Alvarez, I'm also a safety officer, and I work, I'm a director of engineering for a big company, Ocean Properties. That's my main job, and then I love helping here.
George was just recently made our captain and our safety officer. We had a little pinning ceremony last night for him.
My name is Nick Goletto. I do construction and I also work at Parish Fire, and I'm a fire to and EMT.
And Nick, you were, you went on a leave of absence with us for a while. Tell people where you went.
Right, I, so I also enlisted in the Marine Corps Reserves.
Yep, yeah, exactly.
My name is Marcus Fodenberg. I, um, work at the marina with Liz, as she said. I also work at Parish Fire Department, and I'm a firefighter to EMT.
And you've been with us...
Uh, over a year and a half.
Yep. Okay. Brad?
Oh, no, I'm, you already talked to me.
I introduced Brad, Brad, sorry.
I'm just a first responder, and then I do honeydew list here in the park for Judy.
Okay, and then our chief. Chief Tim Hillman.
Yes, ma'am.
Chief's been with us for nine years?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And, uh, he became chief in 2013?
2016.
16, okay. Okay. And when you're not here guiding all of our wonderful people, what are we doing?
Uh, my primary job is I work for Manatee County Area Transit.
Okay.
So those of you who have scheduled a handicap bus or have caught the big bus out on the street corner by the Chinese restaurant or the Antamir Oyster Bar, you probably have seen me behind the wheel at one time or another.
Okay. One of the things I want to point out about chief, just chief drives a bus during the day. He also is in tune to what's going on in this park every minute now. He has come close to losing that full-time job, because he will not hesitate if there's a call in this park, and he knows which Manatee County EMS unit's been dispatched. He knows where they are. If he thinks that's too far away and it's going to take too long for them to get here, he will pull his bus over, get off, call dispatch and say, no, you need to dispatch Cedar Hammock. They can't wait for someone to come from University Town Center Mall, for instance, for this call, and he, he does it. Um, so we're very, he's very dedicated to the park, and he knows what's going on here all the time. So, uh, so yes. Um, okay, back to the presentation. So we talked about, um, times for people to arrive, for EMS to arrive on scene versus for one of us to arrive on scene. When every minute counts, when you're having a allergic reaction, or you're having difficulty breathing, or you're having a heart condition, you know, every minute counts, and if we can, our goal is to have the funding to have shifts, to be able to give them a compensation plan that makes it worth their while to be here. They, they're here, and they're, they're getting nothing. Um, and, you know, you heard some of them say they're also working for Parish. That's because Parish pays them $20 a call. Okay? So they're, they're working there, then, because, you know, you get paid $20 a call, but they're coming here too, because they love the family of Trailer Estates. Um, okay, so how much does it cost to run a fire rescue department? So I've heard a lot of comments about how come all of a sudden there's financial problems? I've never heard of any financial problems before. The fire department's been here for 58 years. Now all of a sudden, we're having issues? So I want you to understand that we've lost money every year. So I took the last three years' financials, and I really wish we could show this up there, but in addition to the assessment money that we collect, and let's talk about that, $75 per home. Now remember, if you pay that tax bill in November, you're getting a 4% discount. Then the Manatee County tax assessor says, I collected it for you. I needed administrative fee for doing that. So that's $75 that's on your tax bill, about $70 goes to the fire department. Okay? It's about $91,000 a year for everything that we do. The only reason why we've been operating as long as we have is because of our fire auxiliary. They clearly are keeping our head above water, and we have had to call on them a lot the last couple of years. In this slide, it talks to, what's the matter? Oh, yes!
You don't need to say it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Um, so those of you here, okay, so in this three-year period that I took a look at, $96,000 was between the fire auxiliary and some donations from residents, a few fundraisers, and I think there was one $13,000 grant in there that we got from, I think, Firehouse Subs. So $96,000, and we still lost $32,000 over that three-year period, about $10,000 a year. If I look at the fiscal year we're in right now, we're going to lose another $10,000, I can guarantee it. Okay? Some of the drivers of that loss, that expense, is insurance. We are on a flood zone. We're right across the street from the marina. Every year, our flood insurance premiums go through the roof. So that's, I mean, that's uncontrollable, but if you will look here, $49,000, almost $50,000 during this three-year period was taking care of our old equipment, making sure the truck is running, and it breaks down often. Right now, we need to send it out for service. It's going to be gone, we don't know how long. We're trying to find a backup truck, so that if there's a call, we have, we can respond. We've got two choices for backup trucks. Southern Manatee has a truck that they've offered to us. It won't fit in our bay, which means if we take that truck, we have to find somebody who's willing to stay at the firehouse 24/7 to protect that truck because of all the gear that's on it. Whoa. Then we also are offered a truck from Parish, a spare truck that has nothing on it. So if we get that truck, every hose, every piece of equipment we have on our truck, we're going to have to take off and put on their truck. Now, it'll fit in the bay, so we can put the doors down, but this is what we're looking at right now, because it's got to go back out for service. And this is what we typically have to do when it goes out for service. If it's going to be gone for more than a couple hours, we have to get a reserve truck, because we have to be able to respond. So our biggest shortages that we're dealing with is vehicle maintenance, equipment. The building is old, it was built in 1964. It just recently had to have a complete new plumbing system put in. Thank God the auxiliary covered that for us, because we certainly didn't have the funds for a plumbing system. The air conditioning went in it. They helped us tremendously with the air conditioning system. Um, and then, you know, we need to really, staffing, you know, we need to figure out a way to offer a competitive salary to our volunteers to make them stay. We're a great place, we got a great chief, we got a great lieutenant, but it, it's just, we need to do something like that. So I talked about the fire truck repair, the $49,000 that we spoke to before. Equipment, we are required by NFPA to have a set, a full set of turnout gear for every single one of our firefighters. It's not a one-size-fits-all. As you can see, we have some that are tall. I mean, you, you have to have a set. These sets only last 10 years. It doesn't matter if they responded to one fire or 1,000 fires. In 10 years, NFPA says they have to be put to bed. They cannot be used for anything. They can, they, if you're going to use them for non-fire training, they have to be clearly labeled that they're for non-fire training because they're expired. Right now, we're in March now. We had eight sets that expired last month. Okay? Um, so we have that need. SCBA's, our self-contained breathing apparatus, we have one of them back there. Uh, let's see if I can remember the numbers. We had six that we had to retire. The auxiliary helped us, and they purchased two. Thank you again. They purchased two sets of turnout gear, but we still have four sets. So when we respond to a fire, we need a minimum of 10 SCBA units. We have to have two firefighters that can enter the building to look for survivors. That's two sets. We have to have two firefighters waiting outside, because if anything happens to those two, they need to be able to go in. So that's four. We have to have two that are ventilating. They're going around, they're breaking windows, or doing whatever they need to do to ventilate. We have to have two that are putting water on the building, so we're up to eight. We have two spares, because when you're in the middle of all that, that's not when you want to find out your system's not working. So we have two spares, so that's 10 sets. They run about six grand, about a little over six grand a set. They come with oxygen tanks that last 30 minutes. So we have two sets of oxygen tanks per unit. Okay? Because they only last 30 minutes. So that's our biggest challenge right now. Right now, we're, we need to do something to get in compliance with the NFPA requirement. Okay, our volunteers, my goodness. Half of, this is half of the contingent. The other half was here this afternoon when we did the open house, um, and, you know, if anybody came to the open house, you got to see them here. If you didn't, at some point in time before you leave, kind of walk around and look at the displays we have here. There's a lot more information about medical call and average times, there's the turnout gear that you can look at, the SCBA's are medical, you know, table will take your blood pressure, check your sugars, whatever you need. So we need to, and we want to employ a full-time fire chief now. I, I believe that's the thing that everybody seems to take issue with. This is my... This is my passion. We are the only fire department in Manatee County without a paid fire chief. We have no representation at the table when there's meetings that talk about mandates that the big guys upstairs are making on Manatee County. No representation. So we're going to get into that a little bit more. Staffing is important because right now, 18% to 20% of the calls, we don't respond to. And the, I just talked to you about the increased demand on EMS and the amount of time it's taking them to arrive unseen. Okay. I mentioned briefly, Duette pays $20 per call. If we were to put that kind of a compensation plan in, it would be about $8,000. Okay? Parrish pays $10 an hour. To do that, we would have to have a budget of $175,000 to bring that into place. West Manatee does shift work. They pay $65 for a 12-hour shift. If we had two resources for each shift, it would cost us $95,000 a year. Okay? That's all money we don't have right now. I'm recommending that we do a combination compensation plan. This is what I would like to do, and if we can get the referendum, we will have the funding to do it. $20 per call and $10 per hour for the training. Training's very important and I, I want them there and I want them learning. To do that, we would need a budget of about $57,000. Still less than a lot of the other departments. Okay, full-time fire chief. We talked a little bit about that. We, we don't have anybody who can network with the other fire chiefs. He does the best he can as far as finding that truck when ours is going out for service. We have no representation for district-wide meetings. We don't have anybody that manages, well, he does his best to manage reporting, but it's only so many hours in the day. And, and I mentioned before, recruiting is, he was able to do some recruiting because he was on vacation from work. Go to the technical colleges, talk to the people who are in school, talk to them about us and about why they should come to work, come here and get some experience. And then again, only, only fire department in Manatee County that doesn't have a chief. So the other departments that do, the career fire departments, this is what their chiefs make. Okay? They make over $100,000 a year. Mayaka Fire Department, their chief makes $77,000 a year and Duette has a part-time fire chief that makes 27. Okay? So if you just double that, you've got 54 if he was full-time. Our wonderful chief, who wants nothing more than to be the full-time chief here, is willing to take that job for $40,000 a year. He wants it. He wants to, he loves this park. He's dedicated to this park. If we can find a way to pay him that, he will take the job. How lucky are we? Okay, so tomorrow, I wanted to talk about the referendum. So thumbs up, thumbs down. What happens? First, I want to make sure everybody understands who can vote on the referendum. I know this is a big, big issue. You can only vote if you're a Florida resident registered to vote in this precinct, Precinct 405. Okay? If you're registered to vote in another state, you can't vote on this. This is different than voting for the Board of Directors for the park. Okay? Because we are a completely separate entity. We have our own charter, just like the park does. So let's see. If the referendum should unfortunately fail the next time, let's back it up a little bit. Right now, we're looking at putting this question back on the ballot for December. Okay? We have, the Manatee County Supervisor of Elections has to run the election. And if we can piggyback on another election, we can do it at no cost. If we have to do our own special election, it's about $5,000. We have to pay a flat $2,500 to Manatee County. We have to pay for every person that works that day or night. We have to pay for every ballot that's printed, the postage for all of them that get mailed to absentee voters. We have to pay for it all. If we can piggyback on the December Board of Trustees election, if we're fortunate enough, we have four people running for the board, if we're fortunate enough to have at least five people vying for those spots and we have an election, we can put this referendum question on that and we won't have to pay. We're going to have to figure out a contingency plan, right? And we're going to watch that very closely because we got to come up with some money if we need to, if, if there isn't one. Because this is too important. We can't, we've already waited. We can't wait any longer. So let's say it doesn't pass. The first thing we've got to do is we've got to buy that, that turnout gear that I just told you about. If we're going to be a fire department, we have to have gear and we have to be able to respond to a fire or we're not a fire department. We have to get the compensation plan in place. If this referendum doesn't pass, they can see the writing on the wall. They're not going to stick around and I don't blame them. We've got to find a way to give them some compensation. We also have to have money from the auxiliary. Thumbs up or thumbs down? We are counting on $25,000 a year from the auxiliary to meet the gap. We need them tomorrow as much as we've needed them to date. So we're going to have to utilize our reserves to make it happen. If I run the numbers through, on 9/30/2024, we have no money left. There's not enough money in the checking account and the taxes that we'll get in for the next fiscal year to keep the lights on. That's just the reality. So I want to point out, so let's, let's, and if it fails, Cedar Hammock will take us on. They will be your fire department. So this is the boundary that Cedar Hammock covers right now. Okay? So the thing you need to keep in mind is there's a lot of development going on around here. If anybody goes out El Conquistador, they can see it. That's all Cedar Hammock territory. So they're going to be taking on that and they'll be taking on us. It's quite a bit of it. So that empty, that circle right there represents the area that's under development right now. It's a pretty good-sized area that they're going to have to take on. We are, I was going to do the little circle. I don't know if I can figure out how to do that real quick, but we're right here. Okay? That little tiny space compared to the circle, that's all the area that's developing that Cedar Hammock's going to be taking on. So let's say that happens. So this is, Bay Shore Gardens is, is supported by Cedar Hammock. So if you're in Bay Shore Gardens, you get two taxes on your tax bill. You get a non-ad valorem tax. That's what our $75 is. It's a non-ad valorem tax. So right now in 2020, that non-ad valorem tax for people in Bay Shore Gardens was $209.94. Okay? The state of Florida, in our charter, allows us to increase that by a personal income growth. They take the average of the last five years' personal income. It's been about 5% and you can increase your tax every year. So that's what it is now. It will go up 5% every year. Okay? Then you have an ad valorem tax. Your ad valorem tax is based on the value of your house. So if you haven't done so, there's a spreadsheet out on our website. It's called TE versus CH, Cedar Hammock. If you go there and you look up your taxable value of your home and you key it into a cell, it will tell you what your personal property tax bill will look like. Okay? So I encourage you all to do that so you understand what, what's going to happen. So for this particular home, their tax bill for fire protection will be $339.94 for fire protection. Okay? We're not talking about medical. Now, if you fall out of bed and you don't have any medical injury and you just need to be helped into bed, then Cedar Hammock will be called for that lift assist. I don't know. If you're having cardiac issues, would Cedar Hammock be dispatched for that? If EMS can't? Or would they automatically be dispatched?
Cedar Hammock Fire Rescue will automatically be dispatched with Manatee County EMS.
If we're not here anymore?
If we are not here anymore and the referendum fails. You need to understand is the size and magnitude and number of residents that you now fall in with, you are just one other trailer home in many other trailer homes in their district. They will not inhabit our station. They won't come into the park unless called for an emergency call. And then you may not get the truck right up the street or right down the street. It's whatever truck is available at that moment in time, just like you will only get the ambulance that is available at that moment in time. So...
So, yeah. Right now, if, if there's a call, hopefully it's going to come from Cedar Hammock Station 4 on US 41 because that's the closest available emergency medical unit if they're not already out on a call. If they're already out on a call, it goes to Southern Manatee. That's the next closest available unit. It's sitting at Southern Manatee Fire Rescue. So it, it would fall into who's the closest available unit that's not already on a call that would determine who answers that call. So let's, let's hope for the best and assume it does. What does that mean for us? So we're asking for $100. That's so, what, what does that really mean? So, you know, we looked at what, what costs $100? So that's a couple of movie tickets, you know, a couple of months of Netflix, you know, lunch at a fairly nice restaurant. So, I mean, this is what this equates to and you need to, I hope everybody will like, think about that. That's $8.33 a month. That's a pizza. You know, I mean, so I hope that people, you know, will, will definitely think about what is important to them. Okay, I was going to pull this slide, but I didn't. I want you to know that if this does pass by December of 2021, we have already submitted our tax roll to the Property Tax Office for the tax bills you're going to get. So no money, no additional money will come into the park until the fiscal year 2023, 2024 is when we'll start seeing the revenue from that. In the meantime, we still have stuff, stuff we need to do to keep the doors open. So we're going to end up using the reserve that we have and hope we, the truck we fondly call Big Red doesn't get any worse than it is today. Once we start getting the revenue flow from this, we can take a loan from the bank to buy a new, a newer fire truck. We'll never have the cash flow for a new fire truck and we don't need a new fire truck. Let's get real. We just need a newer one than the one we've got. We're still going to need that $25,000 from the auxiliary. That doesn't change. We still need people to donate. We still need people to volunteer. It's still very important to us. So, questions? I did get some questions in advance. So what I'd like to do is kind of take care of those and then we can open it up to any that you might have here if I haven't already answered them or ones you've thought of with, with my spiel. So the first question is, for the year 2020, how many fire and EMS calls were received each month? This is kind of hard to see, but I can tell you it averages from, there's eight in October, December, it goes up to 23 in July. Right now, for the month of January 2021, we went on 29 calls, the highest we've had. The records I have go back to 2017. The highest January we've had since 2017. February 32, highest February we've had since 2017. Okay, the volumes have been picked up quite a bit. They want to know if there's a job description for chief. There is. We have copies of the job description that we, he will be working under at one of the tables back there. I hope that, I printed a bunch of them. If anybody wants a copy of the job description, you're welcome to, to go get one back there. But yeah, he, he does have a job description. Assuming there will be benefits with this position, does the proposed $100 increase cost for benefits and, or will it increase the general budget with all other full-time employees? I think this is where there was confusion between hiring him as an employee and the employees we have of Trailer Estates Park and Recreation District. Okay? He will be the only paid person. Okay? The, the volunteers will get a stipend. He will be payrollled. And we can have, there's a certain percentage of people you can have on your payroll and still be called a volunteer fire department. One person is not going to affect that. We will still be a volunteer fire department. And it does not include benefits. He has a wife that works with benefits. He's going to go under her benefit plan because he's trying hard to make this happen and that's one way he knows he can help, by going under her benefit plan. Okay. Explain how increasing the job to full-time will benefit the park 24/7, 365 days a year. It already, his, him being the chief, there are, you're already getting a 24/7, 365-day benefit because he's, like I told you, he's on all the time. Even if he's driving his bus, he's on. So you already get him 24/7, 365. What you get is him physically in the park, Monday through Friday, to go on those calls. You get that. So, you know, and then if we can get a competitive wage and we can offer shift work, you're going to have other people in the park that are going to be able to go on calls as well as him. So the whole park will benefit 24/7, 365. How often does fire gear need to be replaced? I, I spoke to this a little bit. NFPA says, "I don't care how many times you've used it. The materials that they're made with, over the years, disintegrate. 10 years, put it away. You can't use it. You can't put it on a firefighter and have them respond to a call." What are the reasons for replacement? So the moisture barriers, they're fragile. That's where they break down. And it, the career fire departments that go on a lot more fire calls than we do, they replace their turnout gear every five years. Okay? We're, we are able to get 10 years out of them, but that's all we can get. Without funding from grants, what is the short-term and long-term funding plan? Without funding from grants, we are 100% dependent on the referendum. Even if we get grants, I mean, I, at this point, we have to move forward because we don't know if we're going to get grants or not. We submitted grant applications. Thank you, Dottie. She spent ungodly amounts of hours with me, helping with grants. About 30,000 people apply for grants every year. About 5,000 people get funding. So I hope we did a good job. We think we did a good job explaining our need, but at this point, we're still in waiting mode to see if we can get that funding. The long-term plan, you know, we, either way, we need, we need the referendum. So that's all I got for questions submitted, submitted in advance. After all of this, if you've got a question, I'd love to hear it. You're welcome to go to the podium. This is informal. You know, you don't have to give your name and address like we do at the board meetings. We would just like to know what's going on, what do you need to, to understand because we want to do whatever it takes to, to help you truly appreciate the situation we're in and so you can make the right informed decision that's right for you. So does anybody have any questions? Can you come? Yeah, you can go. I'm not, I don't want to pass microphones around. That's why I'm not going back, so. Yeah, we'll do that. Is the mic on? Did we turn that mic on? Oh, is it on the mic itself? It's plugged in. Oh, I have no idea if that's what, does it or not. Here, yeah, we'll get you this one. Thank you, Elizabeth. You probably figured I'd have some questions. All right, bring it on. I always do. Bring it on. On the referendum, is it possible to have two questions on the referendum? One, that has to do with the proposed cost and the things like the gear and other operational costs that are needed for sustaining the operations? And the second question about whether or not a full-time fire chief should be hired? I think...
I think those are two issues that were very much mixed up in the first referendum, and I think that would give good guidance to the fire department. I don't know if that's possible, but I would recommend doing that. Do you want me to ask the questions or?
Well, let me answer that question, and then I think we need to give another gentleman a chance so that we can, and then if you have another one after that.
I have several.
You know, we, yeah, I can put two referendum questions on there, but what I would prefer to do is understand why you, you know, anybody here doesn't think a full-time fire chief is the right answer, because then I have, I need to do a better job of explaining it to you. Because at the end of the day, the amount of time I spend at the fire department and what I see and what I see, because I also serve, because why not, on another board, which is the Manatee County Fire Commissioners Association. So a representative from every fire department, a commissioner, has another meeting that I go to, and I serve on that board too. And when I kind of network with those other commissioners at those other fire departments and what we see every day, there's no question in my mind, or any of the commissioners' minds, and I know probably everyone standing over there, that we would benefit tremendously from having him as a full-time fire chief. So yes, we can do two questions, but what I would prefer to do is understand what it is that we can do better to help anybody who thinks that that's not necessary understand why we are passionate and believe it 100% is necessary. So hopefully, if people, other people have questions about that, I'd love to know what your reservations are, what your concerns are, so we can do a better job of trying to help that along. So yes, but we can do two questions. I just would rather we do what we know is, what we think is right. So you had a question back there, sir?
We'll go ahead and have him come up. I've got the.
Thank you. Thank you. I didn't want to be passing microphones around, so we'll do hand sanitizer now.
That's the best I can.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you, Lori.
You're welcome.
Let's do what we need to do. All right.
Simple question. You said that eight of those complete outfits are going to be coming up. Is there a way to stagger those so that we don't have to get hit with a bill for eight of them all at once?
Absolutely. The financial plan, once we're, if we're able to get funding, is we're going to replace a set every year, one every year. We will never, ever be in a position where we will have eight sets that all need to be replaced at the same time. It's, you know, when we're looking at the budget and we couldn't come up with the money, we're like, oh, maybe next year we'll buy a set, maybe next year. And the next thing we know, we have eight. So yes, the plan is to never be in that position again. So did anybody else have a question? Okay, Gordon does. Yeah, he's got it on. But let's.
Mary, when you were going through the numbers, I heard you say the $40,000 for the chief plus whatever the payroll taxes would be. I assume that'd be another somewhere $5,800 in that area.
About 7.65%.
Well, but you'd have unemployment, you'd have workers' comp.
He's already covered for workers' comp.
Okay, but you'd have unemployment that would be on top of.
Yeah, so we, yeah, a couple thousand dollars more.
But whatever that, and I think you said $57,000 would be the estimated cost if you did the stipend and the training cost. So that's a little over $100,000. If you did the $100, you'd get only 93% of that, or I think you, were the numbers that you were doing.
Yeah.
So that would be, what, $115,000, $110?
Times 1,265 homes, I need my calculator.
Yeah, something like that. So that, those two items seem like it would take almost all the money. So it doesn't seem like $100 per home would be enough to fund the chief, the stipends, the training pay, as well as buying 10.
Right.
SKVA and a bunch of turnouts as well and that. So has the board taken a position yet on how much to ask for in this referendum?
So I had shared that we're not going to be able to, nothing that we pay is going to come in until 2023. So what we can do, the only thing we can do for the referendum, is that personal income growth increase that I spoke of. So right now, we're at $75. We will apply the personal income growth, so the next tax bill you get will be $76, $77, tiny increase. And then the next year, it'll go up another 5%, and then the next year, it will go up $100 that we're trying to get. So let's say we're now at $180, just to throw a number out there. We will include the 5% personal income growth every single year because we have to to cover the fact that everything is going to cost more than it did the year before. And this is nothing unique to us. Every fire department that has this kind of a taxing structure does it. Cedar Hammock ups their non-advalorem 5% every single year, and they have a multimillion-dollar budget. But they can, and they do. Okay? We will be doing it, we need to do it, in order just to keep up with inflation. Once we use our reserves to get, take care of our immediate need that we have right now, with that money, we'll be able to buy the one set of turnout gear and maybe every other year an SCBA because we don't need one of those for every single firefighter. So we'll be able to keep up with it. I did a scenario that went up 10 years. If we buy a fire truck and we get a 10-year loan, I have our bills going up 5% a month, our salaries going up, or stipends going up 3% a month, and then the loan. And we not only can survive, but maybe about seven years down the road, we might be able to start putting the money back into the reserve that we had to use to get through the fact that we now have to wait two years before we start getting that money to come in. It'll take us a while to get the reserves back to what they are today. But if, right now, the reserves are held because we never know when Big Red's going to die. And let me tell you, we have $200,000 in reserves. You can't buy a fire truck for $200,000. But it's all we have, and we have not been able to add a dime to it over the years. There's just nothing to add to it. But it's what we're using it for now. And if we can get a newer truck, it hopefully won't break down. Okay.
You said the proposed $20 per call and $10 per hour training would cost about $57,000 a year.
Yeah.
Is that, and that's going to cover your two personnel at the station, 24/7, 365?
I, that's my goal. We've got to find people that are willing to work, two shifts a day, every day. So, but that's what that number equates to, two resources per day, 24 hours a day. So we always have two people going on a call. Now, you know, if those two people aren't chief, you know he's going to go. So you're going to have three because he's not going to stay home. And if it's not Elizabeth, I can guarantee you she'll be there too, probably.
Mary, we had talked before, and I had said, well, why don't we have an advalorem tax as well as the non-advalorem tax? And I think everybody should understand that it's the only way we can be taxed is the non-advalorem because of the way we're set up.
The way the charter is written, yes.
So we're capped at 175, so we're not going to be subject to advalorem tax like we would be.
Right.
If we decide not to do the referendum.
Correct. And, you know, I don't know how much people have taken the time to understand the advalorem tax, but if you're not a Florida resident, homestead resident, the value of your house goes up every year. Okay, it can go up as much as 8% a year if you look at your tax bills over the last couple of years. If you're a Florida resident, homesteaded, the value cannot go up more than 3%. So, so, you know, there's, and that is going to go up every year. So you're going to be paying more in your advalorem tax every year, and you're going to be paying, every year over year, you're going to be paying more in your non-advalorem tax. And don't get me wrong, you're going to be paying more every year over year in your non-advalorem tax for us too. But it will never match what you're going to be paying to another fire district. It will always be substantially less.
Will the presentation slides be posted on the fire district website?
Yes. Yes, we'll get them out there.
And the tax calculator that you talked about earlier?
Yeah.
It's very difficult to find on the website. Maybe there could be something on the website that talks about, you know, title referendum or something without having to go look for it because it's not easy to find.
It's under the assessment tab, and you're absolutely right. It just simply says TE versus CH calculator. I'll come up with a much better description so it's clear what it is. That absolutely, I agree.
If it's on its own little bubble on the website, rather than hidden somewhere down below, and I know it's not hidden, it's just a challenge to find.
No, it's just a line item with a link. But, you know, if that makes it easier, we can make that happen. That's absolutely.
I don't believe Cedar Hammock has a volunteer fire component.
No, they do not.
To their department. Has it been discussed or explored that if TE becomes part of Cedar Hammock for a variety of reasons? Is it an option for the TE fire station to become a volunteer arm of Cedar Hammock?
No.
Because, and why not?
In our charter, it says if we dissolve, so we no longer are Trailer Estates Fire Control District, the station goes to the park.
Understand, okay.
The contents are ours, and we will have to figure out what to do with those contents, but the building itself becomes the property of the park. So Cedar Hammock can't, unless the park sold it to them, Cedar Hammock can't. And, you know, they don't have, they would have to take our very old fire trucks too because their trucks are like million-dollar fire trucks. They wouldn't live, they wouldn't be able to fit in our bays. So there'd be that challenge too.
So to continue the question a little bit further.
Yeah.
So if the, if those issues were addressed, so maybe the building goes back to Trailer Estates, Trailer Estates made it available for the fire department, could a fire volunteer component, could there be a volunteer fire component developed for Cedar Hammock that would stay here and still provide, I mean, that's a different way to explore it.
Yeah, no.
And I've not heard anyone talking about that option.
To be perfectly honest, we have never come right out and asked Chief Hoyle if he would be interested. I think, you know, nobody's asked the question. Do I think he would do it? Never. But I haven't asked the question. Okay, you can answer that question. I love it. I love it.
Before I came and worked at Trailer Estates, I physically worked at Cedar Hammock as a volunteer. They referred me to the, my predecessor, the chief at Trailer Estates. And they were explicit about they do not have a volunteer program. They do not want a volunteer program. They had previously had had a volunteer program, and they purposely removed it. They found it nonprofitable. It was more of an expenditure in a business model, they cut the fat.
Thank you. I forgot you worked there. That's right.
Okay, and I have one last thing.
Sure.
You asked earlier the question about if people had thoughts about hiring a full-time fire chief. From a business perspective, it seems more important, even though I understand the value of a full-time staff person. Staff costs never go down, they always go up. And even though $40,000 plus whatever sounds good now, that doesn't mean it's going to stay that way. It doesn't mean it's not going to increase a lot. Doesn't mean that our chief is going to be in that position, and it could become a revolving door if people changed over because the cost, because the pay is so low. I would rather see the money go toward better stipends, better support for our volunteers like we have standing over there, and the fire chief included, so that we're more competitive than some of these, along with some of these other fire departments, so that we can sustain the volunteers, remain a training program, even though we lose some of them, some of them choose to stay, and at least keep the quality that we have and continue and perpetuate that quality by offering something more than $3 a call. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
By the way, thank you for all the fire department commissioners and volunteers who put all this together.
Okay. Do you have a, okay, Joe, and then we can go. Or do you have something you want to say, Lori, right now?
The more to the full-time fire chief than running calls, a lot of calls. They often, they were supposed to be meetings.
I'm sorry, there's more to the full-time fire chief than running calls. Yes, that is very important. But we also need a representative at the table when important issues are discussed and decisions are made countywide for all the fire departments. Without chief being able to be attending the meetings, then there's not a, we are the only 100% volunteer fire department. There is nobody there saying, well, what about this? What about that? They're just waving their magic wands with their million-dollar budgets, and we're having to comply. So we really need him representing there, and we need him networking with the other chiefs.
The, I am kind of, I also want to talk about the fact that if there's a fire at the airport, they have a fire department, but as a close available unit to the fire department, aren't there meetings on a regular basis about planning for disasters at the fire department? He's never able to be there. So all the planning that they're doing in case there's a disaster there, we're not there. We don't, you know. Okay, Joe?
Now, if I'm not mistaken, the present Board of Commissioners for the fire department is pretty brand-new, is that correct?
It is pretty brand-new. Karen is our newest, and then the next newest would be Linda. I think Nancy came just a little before you. Lori is our veteran. And Lori asked me to teach her QuickBooks because they didn't have a treasurer, and she wanted to do it, and I was like, I'll just load QuickBooks and then I'll hand it back to you. And that was the end of that story, and so I just said, oh, God, just give it to me, I'll do it. And then I do have a fire, sort of a firefighter background. My husband's father was the fire chief of a volunteer fire department. He was a volunteer firefighter. His brother was the chief of a volunteer fire department. So the next thing I know, I'm just swallowed up and spending a lot of time.
Right. And so what happened is you guys came in and you acquired a financial mess, basically. I mean, we were not aware of what was happening. And how long has it been that Trailer Estates has been paying only $75 a year?
2006. I know, I went back and tried to figure it out. Yeah, we, well, this is the issue. It maxed out at $75. So when we came on, I think it was Lori and I and Linda, I can't remember if you were there or not, I started saying, we can't be the only fire department that's challenged by the mandates that are coming down to us as a volunteer fire department. Duette is a 100% volunteer fire department. Let's get together with Duette and find out, how do they handle these situations? Because we could probably learn from them. So we reached out to Duette. Duette is a very unique, they have a fantastic working relationship with Parish. So the chief of Parish said, come on over, we'll talk to you about, you know, anything you want. We'll share as much information to help you understand what's going on and how we're handling it, because they're like probably the next size up. When we met with Chief Bailey over there, chief said, you need to do a referendum. And we went, excuse me? What? And he said, this is how you get funding, when you've maxed out your charter amount, you do a referendum. And this is the only way you're going to be able to increase it. We had no idea. We, and we said, okay, talk more. He put us in touch with an attorney that does referendums. That's all he does. He's up in Tallahassee. We set up a conference call with him, and we learned a lot about what was available to us. This has been available for many years. The personal income tax growth, the 5%, that's been available forever. You know, you've got volunteers who give of their time to serve on these boards, and, you know, it's a lot to learn, and if you don't have, you know, the ability to understand those things, you miss opportunities. So we were like thinking, I don't know what we're going to do, and we're going to be the people in the park that everyone's going to like swear at because, you know, we don't know if we can keep this going to. know if we can keep this going to. We can do this. We can do this, there's an answer. We can do a referendum, we can do the personal income tax growth, there is going to be life. We had energy when we left there. We were like on the way home in the car going crazy about all the opportunities that we thought we could have. But it wasn't, it was only because we reached out and said, help us learn how you're dealing with these challenges. That was right when Manatee County said, if your power goes out because of a natural disaster and you can't get your bay doors open, don't call us. We're not coming. You need to get a generator so that you can get those bay doors up and go on calls. That's it. And we're like, where are we going to get that? Thank you auxiliary again. But you know.
So my point is, back in 2006, what was the cost of a loaf of bread?
Oh.
What was the cost of a car?
Yeah.
I mean, prices go up, expenses go up. So now we're asking for another $100 a year to be competitive and to preserve and maintain the safety and the health of our residents. And the reality too is that a lot of times in life you don't have a choice. We're given a choice now. We can choose between paying a little extra money and having a TE Fire Department or paying a lot more money and getting less benefit, less response time. It just, you know, it just doesn't make sense to me. But I think my real main point is to really emphasize just how hard the fire commissioners have worked. They asked me a little while ago to sit in on some meetings and I was blown away. They put in countless hours, you know, because for a long time, the fire commissioners, they just kind of went about and did their thing and, you know, and look at the mess we're in now. So really.
I don't want to like.
No, no, I'm just.
It's just, you know, you really have to invest time and learn. I mean, Karen, my gosh, she's very overwhelmed in the short time she's been here about all that it takes to run a fire department. Because we're a volunteer fire department, the five commissioners run the department. Okay? We're, we are charged with the administration of the fire department. So there's a lot involved in that and we all have our individual jobs that, there's the individual job of liaison to the chief and building person, but there's the job description that we all had when we worked, all other things that, you know, are assigned or need to be done. And right now, we are such a good team, let me tell you. If it needs to be done, there's no question, it gets done. You know, every one of them was helping me with tonight because they knew I wasn't going to be available. And this is just, we're a great team. It's a lot of work though, running a fire department. You learn a lot. Right. Yeah, I don't know what, it's less and less every year because it's more and more challenging to get people to be volunteers. The big, I think one of the differences between us and just another town volunteer fire department is they do fundraisers, they have chicken barbecues, they have pancake breakfasts. We can't do that, we're a local government. Okay, we can't do raffles, we can't, you know. So the only source of income we have is the tax that we collect and the donations that we get from the auxiliary or the donations that we get. Now, there was a group of residents in the park that said, well, then we need to form a club like we have the beautiful, you know, we have so many clubs in this park that let's just form a club that says, we want to help the fire department and let's do some fundraisers. And we did, we did some fundraisers, we did a dance. I think we made about two grand, $2,500. I mean, that's not enough to buy a piece of turnout gear, but hey, you know, it was fun and we were able to help. I mean, we did the, we were going to do one last year because of COVID, it got postponed. This year it got postponed. You know, that group, I think, is still going to continue to do fundraising and help in any way they can, but we can't do a lot that some of these small-town volunteer fire departments are able to do to, and I don't know how it works in small-town fire departments either. In Florida, you have to be certified firefighter in the state of Florida in order to be a volunteer or a full-time firefighter. So it's no longer the, you know, my brother was a volunteer firefighter in his town, he didn't have to go to school. He learned on the job. We can't do that here. Can we see if there's, I know the poor people on Zoom have been waiting a long time. Do we know if there's anybody on Zoom that has any questions?
Mary, can I time in for a second?
Yes, you can. Go ahead and check and see if anybody on Zoom has a question, but you can do it.
Something to point out, I understand that I hear 25% of the fire departments across the country are volunteer, but 25% are paid. That's not the case in Manatee County. We are the only non-paid department.
Well, Duette. Duette's still a volunteer fire department.
Duette, yeah, Duette does run under volunteer.
Mayaka, I head up there as a volunteer fire department. Mayaka is merging with East Manatee. They can't survive anymore. They've, so they're going to, they're merging with East Manatee and so it will be literally Duette and us. Yeah. They get support from Parish, unlike a lot of. Okay. So none on Zoom that we've seen, nobody? If anybody on Zoom would like to ask a question, if you can unmute your mic, we'd like to hear from you. Okay. Do you guys have anything that you'd like to say about, you know, working for Trail Estates Fire Control District and wanting to stay here for many, many years to come? I know, you know. This is the problem right here. This young lady right here is being actively recruited because she is that good and I got it, you got to stay, I'm sorry sweetie. We can't lose you, you're just, you're so good here, so. If you need the mic, go for it.
So let's just get a little history about me. I basically grew up in the firehouse. My dad, he was a firefighter at West Palm Beach, that's where I originally came from. And that's when I found the love for the job, seeing my dad go out and help people on their worst times that they have ever had in their life. And that's what motivated me to go to fire school and that's what's motivated me to go to EMT school. I love it, I love working for the public, I love interacting with people. He asked me a question, I'm more than happy to answer it. My grandfather, he was my dad's first captain. Huge mentor. There's so much knowledge, there's so much technology that has grown over the years and as to why we have to keep in compliance with NFPA, whether it's gear or whether it's a simple maintenance on our truck. I personally love this job and I love serving this community and hopefully I can serve as much as I can in Trail Estates as long as we have the doors open. And I appreciate auxiliary, I totally do, everything that you guys do and thank you.
That just made me think of something else, these unplanned mandates that come down. The R911 dispatch center, we have mobile data terminals that all the other fire departments have. Your police department has it, sheriff's department have it, that directly communicate with the 911 dispatch center. We don't have them. We don't have the money for them. As a result, there have been calls where we have arrived on scene without the information that we needed to be prepared when we got on that call. Okay, right now in the day we're living in, it's something like the person is given all the information that would lead you to believe that they're positive for COVID. We don't have that because we don't have those terminals. We go walk into the house and like, now we're exposed. There was a call where, you know, we were dispatched to one address and the call was actually at another address because of the way the cell phone towers worked. The sheriff's department knew about it, we didn't. They said, oh my God, we're not supposed to be here, we're supposed to be here. Thank God, they were dispatched as well because we wouldn't have gotten to that call on a timely basis. We, you know, we kept putting off buying it because we just didn't have the money, but when it became obvious with some recent calls that we cannot afford to wait another minute for these mobile data terminals, we went to our auxiliary and we said, help, please. Wrote the check, they're on order. We no longer will be at a disadvantage, we will have the same information at our fingertips when those calls come in as everybody else in Manatee County has. But before that, we didn't have that. So, I mean, that's just an example of the things that happen that we don't find out about, I mean, chief reads about it when he reads the meetings or the minutes that this is happening and you've got to do this and you've got to do that. And he tries to update us as best he can, but he's not sitting at those meetings when these decisions are made to find out everything and to make sure we've got what we need. Okay? So, what time is it? I'm like, oh, okay. Oh, okay. I just didn't want to keep people longer, but you know, we've been here a while and I've been doing a lot of talking. Is everybody, does anybody else have any other questions or that they'd like me addressed? Or? We'll put the PowerPoint out on the website, tefcd.com. I will probably put it in the Assessment tab because that's where we're putting all of this stuff that's related to the referendum so that you can go out and go through it. We were able to show a little bit of it here, but the people at home weren't privileged for that, so they can do that there. This was streamed live on 7:32, but it will be shown again on 7:32? Okay. So people can do that too. Okay, you have one? Yep.
Mary, if people have questions after this meeting that they just have to ask, how should they go about asking those?
On the Assessment tab on the website, there is a link to a form where they can ask a question. The second they hit submit, that question goes to the department email. Okay, we have a department email, it's not my email, it's not Lori's email. And every one of us have access to that email and we're constantly checking that email to make sure if there's anything out there that needs to be addressed, it's addressed. So if you have a question, absolutely, fill out that form and when it gets submitted, Lori's the biggest babysitter of that email, she'll pass it on to whoever the best person is to answer it. And what we can do is we can put that question and the answer out on the website so everybody can see what everybody else is asking for questions and has for concerns. Is the microphone a piss on her? Okay. Yep.
Mary?
Yes.
I think that a lot of the.
I have given you a lot.
Pardon?
I know, I've given you a lot of information.
No, no, no.
Oh, okay.
A lot of the people who are Florida residents might be the older population that are not computer literate. How are we going to get the information out to them?
So it's very important to us that we do the best job we can to get the word out so that we have the best rate of success in December. This isn't it, this is not going to be the last time you hear from us. We've had articles in the Tribune every month, we will continue to have articles in the Tribune every month. We just recently did a brochure, a trifold brochure, it's on the tables here to just kind of talk about the fire department. We may have more of those coming out that talk about something specific so that everybody, we're constantly there helping you remember, we're here and we need you and, you know, helping you understand the challenge and anything else. So this is just the first of what we're going to do between now and December.
I understand that there are a lot of, there are some people in this park who have been living here a long time, who are on a fixed budget, social security, whatever, that may not realistically be able to afford this increase. And so I don't know how we would do it, but I'd love to be part of setting up some kind of a scholarship fund anonymously to help these people. If they could somehow contact someone in the fire commissioner and then we can take it from there to protect their pride. Because let's face it, times are tough. And so maybe some people can't afford it and I'd like to be a part of that way of helping them to afford it.
I don't know that we can do that as a department, but if there's a club or organization in the park that would like to offer a scholarship program to, so that, you know, if somebody's having a financial issue, you know, the $175, okay, it was 75, so the additional $100, they can help them with that. I think that's wonderful. I think that's another example of what a great community we have as far as everybody always wanting to do their part and be there for each other. I mean, if somebody wants to organize that, I think that's awesome. Yep, did you do?
No.
Kind of hogging the mic.
I know.
Breathe for 30 seconds, thought I was going with you. So to give you an idea of what digs at me the most, what is keeping me up at night, what goes through the mind, is too long of a time. If you dial 911 and a lot of the people sitting in this room right here right now have their loved ones right next to them and you're looking at that person, something has happened. Heart attack, breathing, something. And you call for help. What would be the answer? What would be the answer you want when it takes seven minutes for help to arrive? Those are the longest seven minutes of that person's life, yes? And you have to sit there and watch that. That's too long for me. I'm not comfortable with that. I'm not comfortable with somebody having the need, placing the call for help and having to take a number. Because in Manatee County, you are not just another number, you are not just another mobile home park. Play bocce ball, you play shuffleboard, you play pickleball with these people, you know these people. They're your neighbors, they're your friends. And how would you feel if they dialed 911 and you had to sit there and wait seven minutes and look at that person? Or sometimes up to 16 to 30 minutes and look at that person? What would be the answer you'd want from me? I'm sorry, we were halfway across town. The one that I hate giving is, I was at my day job, they were at their day job. I'm sorry that you had to wait. I'm sorry that something bad had to happen. We try to do our very best every single day. Some days are better than others. But when we look at that data and we look at those charts and we miss out on meetings in Manatee County and the gears of Manatee County just keep going and all of a sudden they say, well, now you have to comply with this or you have to comply with that. And I didn't even know about that. But what is the answer to that question? What would you like that answer to be? If we physically have somebody in that building 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, it's anywhere from three minutes to five to get to your house, to get to your loved one. If I'm at home with my wife and children, if I'm at my job and they're with their families, maybe I can get here in five minutes with lights and siren. I had a resident ask me the other day at the post office, he says, why do I always hear the sirens coming from outside the park into the park? Why don't I hear them coming from the fire station and coming to the emergency? That's because it's me coming from my house and my children. It's lieutenant coming from her house. It's captain, these fine young men and women coming from their homes, their jobs. jobs, to this park, because they all agree with me that seven to nine to 10 minutes is too long for you to sit there and look at the person that you care about, that you know, that you love, and help is on the way. But those are going to be the longest minutes of that life, is it not?
Thank you. I have to admit, when I found out my husband was the one that fell at the station, at the post office, I mean, I thought, okay. Chief was there, Pete was there, and he, and he said to me when I signed up at the hospital, he said, chief was there, and Pete was there, and Brad, I think Brad was there. I mean, he was like, you know, he was like, that's all. That helped calm him, knowing that there was somebody there from the park when he needed them.
From your previous comments and that, I did not get the impression that this referendum would provide enough funding to staff 24/7. The chief's comments suggested that this would be possible to have 24/7. So did I misunderstand it before?
No, we're still expecting at least two people in the station 24/7. Now, don't forget, they can be in the station and they may not get a call. I mean, if they go home, they didn't get paid anything for that.
Right.
If they get a call, they'll get the $20.
My understanding was currently you're only able to respond to about half of the calls. That was anecdotal, so I don't know if that's accurate or not.
No, we're able to respond to about 80% of the calls, most of them are chief, but along.
And is it possible for only one person, or do you have to have two people before you can respond?
Nope, one person.
One person.
He goes on calls by himself all the time.
So if the chief was in the office and was the only one, he can still...
Absolutely.
Take off and respond?
Absolutely, yep.
Okay. I just wanted to clear that up because I had a different understanding.
Because he's going to arrive first on scene and he's going to see what's going on, and if, if he needs to, he can say to Manatee County, you must step it up, okay? I need you to step it up. In the meantime, he's giving CPR or doing whatever he needs to do, and he's telling them, okay, you need to get here a little quicker, because he's there and he sees what's going on. Or he may be saying, I can handle this, all right? You know, this isn't life-threatening, I can handle this, and you don't even have to come, depending on what the call is.
I think the other volunteers all identified, whether they were EMTs or EMRs, but I don't know that the chief was identified that way.
Oh, he's an EMT, I'm sorry, firefighter two EMT.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Yep. You're right, I didn't give your credentials, I apologize for that. Okay. Are we about done for the night? You know, I don't want to miss any questions, but, you know, thank you. You know, we were limited to the number of people we have, and I just wish, I don't know if there were issues with Zoom or not, but, you know. Thank you, and this isn't, this is just the beginning. We're hoping to get out in front of you on a regular basis.